I'd like to call to order the City Caucus meeting. I'd like to call to order the City Caucus meeting for Monday, April 22, 2024. We have two public hearings this evening. If the clerk would please read.
Public hearing number one regarding the Restore New York Round Eight Grant Application.
Public hearing number two.
Public hearing number two regarding the addition of Section 264-113 of the Schenectady City Code regarding the regulation and location of smoke shops, vape shops, hookah lounges, and vape consumption businesses.
We have fourteen items for original consideration. If the clerk would please read item number one.
Item number one for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept a $13,588 trust-building programming grant from the New York State Department of Criminal Justice Services.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. Item number two.
Item number two for original consideration, a resolution authorizing a 2024 budget reallocation related to an agreement between the City of Schenectady and IBEW Local 236.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. Item number three.
Item number three for original consideration, a resolution authorizing a 2024 budget reallocation related to an agreement between the City of Schenectady and NASRC of Carpenters Local 51 Union.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. Item number four.
Item number four for original consideration, a resolution authorizing a 2024 budget reallocation related to an agreement between the City of Schenectady and Trade Union DC 9 Painters, Brooklayers LU 2, and Plumber LU 7.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. Item number five.
Item number five for original consideration, a resolution approving change order number two and the increase of O'Connell Electric's current contract with the City of Schenectady for the Central Park Pool.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. Item number six.
Item number six for original consideration, a resolution authorizing a contract with Young Parents United Incorporated in the amount of $98,000 in 2018 Community Development Block Grant Funding.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. Item number seven.
Item number seven for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the mayor to amend Schedule A of the Cooperation Agreement with the Schenectady Urban Renewal Agency and the Land Utilization Corporation of the Capital District to list additional properties.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. Item number eight.
Item number eight for original consideration, a resolution authorizing an amending Resolution 2024-08 authorizing the granting of a license for a vacant lot on 902 McCollin Street for $2,500.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. Item number nine.
Item number nine for original consideration, a resolution authorizing a settlement of a claim by Duszek T. Rowe.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. Item number ten.
Item number ten for original consideration, a resolution authorizing settlement of a claim by Pamela LaBrake.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. Item number eleven.
Item number eleven for original consideration, a resolution recognizing Friday, April 26, 2024 as Arbor Day in the City of Schenectady.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. This item will be presented at an Arbor Day celebration on February 20-- excuse me, on April 26 at Bale Community Garden. Item number twelve.
Item number twelve for original consideration, a resolution recognizing John Colucci for his 35 years of service to the City of Schenectady.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. This item will be presented at a later date. Item number thirteen.
Item number thirteen, under Contract and Supply, a resolution awarding the bid and contract for the purchase of solar-powered radar speed signs.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. Item number fourteen.
Item number fourteen, under Contract and Supply, a resolution awarding the bid and contract for the Gulf Road Water Main Replacement to Newcastle Paving LLC in the amount of
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. If there's nothing more to come before the City Council Caucus, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Ms. Patrick, second by Mr. Mootivaren, all those in favor? Aye. We are adjourned. I'd like to call the City Council meeting to order for Monday, April 22, 2024. And I'd like to call on Pastor Gatnap from the Deeper Life Assembly to lead us in the prayer invocation.
Heavenly Father, we come to you in honor of the name of the mighty name of Jesus. Our Lord, today, God, you lift up our city of Schenectady before you. I pray, God, that you will make this city, oh God, the heaven. In this area, oh God, that you have placed, oh God, great leaders, our mayor, our president, oh God, and those who are working diligently, oh God, to make Schenectady a better place. I pray, my God, that Schenectady will be a place that is set upon a hill, oh God, that cannot be hidden. I pray, God, that good things will come out of Schenectady. I pray, God, that every curse that is placed upon Schenectady, God, will be broken. In the name of Jesus, I take authority, God, over every spirit, oh God, that is ruling and reigning in Schenectady, and I cast it out in the name of Jesus. Lord, today, I lift up our leaders before you. I pray, God, that you will give our leaders wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, oh God, that they will be able to rule, oh God, in this city. I pray, Father, that this city will be a place of peace, of joy, of happiness, Lord, where people will live, oh God, in the freedom, the grace, and the favor of you. Lord, I speak, oh God, that Schenectady will be a place, oh God, where the light will shine and men will come, oh God, to live in Schenectady. Lord, I pray, God, that your spirit will move. You will reign, oh God. You will open up the windows of heaven, and you will bless Schenectady, God. Lord, a great building, so God, will be put up, and people, oh God, will inherit the benefit of this place. Father, I pray, today, God, that your favor will fall. Your joy, your happiness, and your peace will move in the lives of your people. Lord, I pray, God, that you will bless our mayor, oh God. Lord, that he will make right decisions, oh God, for our city. I pray, God, that you will send the right people that will surround his life, that will back him with his vision. Lord, I pray that you will send great men and women that will surround him, God. I pray, God, that you will cover his life under your blood. Cover every leader, our president, oh God. You will cover every local member under your blood. I give you praise, and I give you thanks. Bless everyone that is present here, God. In no other name but the mighty name of Jesus, I ask. Amen and amen. Praise the Lord.
Amen. I would ask Chief Marino to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice.
Thank you. If the clerk could please complete the roll call.
Ms. Satoro. Mr. Farley is absent. Mr. Mancini. Mr. Mootivaren. Ms. Patrick. Mr. Williams. Ms. Porterfield.
Here. We have two public hearings this evening. And just a reminder that we've extended the public comment period for the public hearing to four minutes.
Public hearing number one regarding the Restore New York Round Eight Grant Application.
I have eight people signed up to speak. The first person is Gloria Kishin.
Good evening. My name is Gloria Kishin. I'm the chairperson of Schenectady Heritage Foundation, which is a historic preservation advocacy group that covers all of Schenectady County. And we, first of all, want to thank all the government agencies that helped us to get to this point where we can even apply for a Restore New York grant for the Masonic group of buildings at the corner of State and Erie. That includes the Historic District Commission, which we started advocating with, and then it went on to the Planning Commission, and finally, it went on to you, the City Council. And with our vast amount of research that was done on these buildings and what they represented in Schenectady's history, we're very happy that all of those groups supported this initiative. And we hope that you will go on to support applying for a Restore New York grant. It's a critical part of getting the funding together for a project like this. You can see kitty corner from the Masonic Temple Building, the Wedgeway Building being restored right now. And the Masonic group of buildings will be a similar situation, where it's a historic building designed by a very important architect in New York State, and with a rich history of the Masons in Schenectady, going back all the way to George Washington's time. They have incredible archives that perhaps some of these will come back to the building and be displayed. So we're really counting on your support for this grant. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Sylvie Brier.
Hi, good evening. I'm Sylvie Brier, and I just want to simply support the efforts towards the Restore Grant for the Masonic Buildings.
Thank you. Todd Garofalo.
My apologies for my handwriting. Hi, I'm Todd Garofano, Executive Director for Discover Schenectady. We're the county's official tourism promotion agency. And you really can't talk about tourism without talking about Schenectady's history. So I'm very pleased to support this grant application. I think having this really important corner, both with the Wedgeway Building and now this corner as well, restored, will do so much just for the beautification of downtown. You probably saw recently, we-- Dino is Alive launched at Armory Studios just over five weeks ago. In just those five weeks, we've had 32,000 tickets sold. So 32,000 people coming to the downtown, which is incredible. And you may have seen the story about our current state of tourism in Schenectady County last Sunday in the Gazette. It's a very positive story. There's people coming to Schenectady like never before. So to have projects like this and the opportunity to restore and talk about our history is very important to us. We hope you'll support that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ray Gillan.
Evening, Ray Gillan. I'm the Commissioner of Planning and Economic Development in Schenectady County. I'm also Chair of Metroplex, and I'm a proud city resident. Want to thank the council for working closely with us in the City Development Department, to put in an application, working closely with the mayor for Restore New York Round Eight. Restore New York is a program to help renovate vacant buildings, distressed properties in the heart of downtown, to try to bring them back to life. And as Gloria said, with your support, we were really successful at getting the Wedgway project underway. It's a $20 million development. But you look across the street, you've got the empty Masonic Building, you've got the empty Chamber Building, and the one that's most painful, because I spent a lot of time there shopping as a kid, is the empty Rudnecks Building, which had a terrible fire. Those three buildings are vacant. We're blessed to have a state grant in hand for the large building, the Masonic Temple. It's under contract with a developer who plans to renovate the building. We are applying for a $600,000 grant to renovate the former Chamber and the former Rudnecks Building. Hope to bring that resolution forward at the next council cycle and submit the grant application in late May. So we really appreciate everyone's support. These are three critical buildings downtown, and we're really excited that we have a developer in hand. We have an opportunity to compete for these state funds, and we are really excited to move this forward and appreciate everyone's time and attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam Clay. City Business, you would like that changed too? Yes, sir. Maureen Newfeld.
Good evening. I'm Maureen Newfeld. I'm the Executive Director of the Downtown Schenectady Improvement Corporation. Thank you for the opportunity to come here and express my support of the revitalization of these properties in downtown Schenectady. As we all know, the DSIC's business is to help promote downtown Schenectady as a vibrant, vibrant community. And a lot of that goes into just how safe, walkable, presentable our city is. And the restoration of these buildings will really help in that. The situation is, they're situated right between a very vibrant community for arts, culture, restaurants, shops, and also a transportation hub that is a great opportunity to connect the two, really be a vibrant part of this community for residents, for new developments, for the Historic District, and also to help boost the local economy in providing all of that commerce as a connector along these busy streets. So thank you for the opportunity, and I'm voicing my support for this.
Thank you. Frank Wicks.
Here's the fourth time you've been here talking behalf of a ceasefire in Gaza.
Excuse me, Mr. Wicks. This is for the public hearing on the Restore Grant.
Okay.
I will move your name to--
Am I doing wrong on the list?
Yes, I'll move your name to City Business.
Okay.
Thank you. Suzanne Unger.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Unger. I'm the former president of the Stockgate Association. I'm a member of the Board of the Schenectady Heritage Foundation, of which Gloria is the president. And I'm about to join the Board of the Schenectady County Historical Society. So clearly, I have an interest in history. But I'm very pleased to stand up here in favor of this proposed application for Restore New York funding. That's a wonderful program that really makes the difference between success or failure with these older buildings. This intersection is probably one of the most prominent ones in Schenectady. Thousands of cars go by there every day. And for years, they've looked at two deteriorating, neglected, forgotten, appearing so anyway, buildings. The fact that the Wedgway Building is now being restored is so exciting, and this would just be a wonderful complement to that project. So we've lost so much of our downtown already, Niklaus Building. I think it's time that we save what we have left. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up to speak, so I declare the public hearing number one closed. Public hearing number two.
Public hearing number two regarding the addition of Section 264-113 of the Schenectady City Code regarding the regulation and location of smoke shop, vape shops, hookah lounges, and vape and consumption businesses.
I have one person signed up to speak, Robert Sanders.
Good morning, Madam Speaker. Good morning, council members, Mayor Protemp. I'm here to talk about the vape shops, cigar shops, and other places. If this was constitutionally legal, I might go along with it. But I see you left cigarettes out of here, when cigarettes are taxed at 55%. Cigars are taxed at 75% apiece, and marijuana smoke is taxed at 16%. But the second highest offender there are cigarettes, Stewarts, other places that sell them. You're not counting that in, okay? It is illegal to do this, okay? Just for the fact that it's constitutionally illegal stolen in Schenectady. The next thing you're going to do is move all the bars into one section that you think are good for you. But alcohol is legal. It's the 18th Amendment. Now, all I got to say about this is, you know, this is just going a little bit too far, because I don't know what the council will do next, okay? We went down this rabbit hole once, and Mr. Mootivaren might know, with Councilman Cozier when he ran for Assembly. He tried moving all sex offenders in one spot. That was found illegal. You cannot do that. So they got-- sex offenders got spread out all throughout the county and the city. To do this is illegal. If you like it or don't like it, I understand that. I completely can understand it. I understand not smoking in parks and things like that. But when you go and you start affecting someone's personal ability, their freedom, you cannot do that, okay? So I ask you to vote no against this. If you don't vote no, and I'm not threatening you, I will file a referral for judicial intervention in the county of Schenectady, and I will bring you to court. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up to speak for public hearing number two, so I declare this public hearing closed. Ask for approval of the minutes from April 8, 2024. Moved by Mr. Williams, second by Mr. Mancini. All those in favor? Aye. If the clerk could please read any communications and petitions.
Communications presented to the City Council from Monday, April 22, 2024. Under official from the mayor, Gary R. McCarthy, a list of appointments dated April 22, 2024. Under general, from Robert S. Alby of the Schenectady Veterans of World War II Incorporated, a letter dated March 24, 2024 thanking the City of Schenectady for donated funds to help maintain their homes. From Teresa Crane, an email regarding parking issues at her home on Union Street, and asked the city to place a sign at the end of her driveway. From Allison Williams, an email regarding the need of signage to prevent big trucks from going down her street citing safety reasons and concerns. Under petition, there were none.
Thank you. A call on council members to provide any committee reports. Next, we have privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda, and I have 15 people signed up to speak. Just a reminder, it's three minutes for this particular portion. Imam Jamal Shah.
Thank you, Madam President, Honorable Council Members. I was here last month. I was here two weeks ago. Guess I didn't make the call list, but in any case, I come to you tonight just to remind you guys of a few things. Over the last two months, we've had two children, small children, die, murdered in Schenectady. For one, baby Halo Branton, 11 months old, died due to the freezing cold temperatures on the GE campus. Number two, five-year-old Charlotte Buskey, was killed due to starvation. Don't have to ask you guys how you feel about that. I already know, because we're all human beings, and we all have good intentions, and we are all principled. These children died right here. Children are dying for the same reasons, 7,000 miles across the world. Just as we look at the children who are murdered in our own neighborhoods as abhorrent and evil, the actions that were taken to take their lives, we also want our city council, our elected officials, there's no one better to speak on behalf of the residents of this city other than this body. I speak on behalf of not just the Muslim community, but the general community of residents within this city. Not talking about Albany, not talking about Niskiuna, talking about the City of Schenectady. We would like to see the ceasefire resolution that was proposed be passed. And for what it's worth, myself, I've been convening with community leaders all over the city, faith leaders, general community action leaders, and I have yet to come across anyone that takes a stance against a simple principle upon which this resolution is based. All life is worth preservation. And it's a symbolic gesture to pass the resolution, but it's been done in 70 cities across America as of February. We're now sitting in April. So even more cities have signed on. This is an effective tool to demonstrate to our federal government what the people on the ground, myself, yourselves, what our sentiments actually are, so that way they can act accordingly. I will also mention that for some of you, we've heard responses as to indicate that this is something not meant for the City Council. We've also heard it from other people speaking in the public forum. I will say again, it's not that we can change the world just by passing a resolution, but more so to demonstrate the principles that we share. This is a united call for peace and justice, and I would say, I would really be difficult and dumbfounded, it's difficult for me to comprehend how anyone can interpret it as anything other than that. And again, in this room, I don't have to ask, and I don't want to ask, because I would like to assume everyone is on the same page, every life is worth the same. There is no one group that's worth more than the other. There is no one body that's worth more than the other. As human beings, as residents of a diverse city and diverse community, this is our call to action, to demonstrate that near or far, this is the stance of this city and its residents, as echoed by the elected officials chosen by the residents of this city, to speak on their behalf. We can pray, and we can pray, and we can pray, but we do need something formal and symbolic from our elected officials to formally recognize a shared principle that exists within all of our hearts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I need to step back. We-- I'm sorry, we didn't have anyone signed up, but I need to-- we should have had the legislative agenda, but no one signed up. That name was crossed off. So I have no one signed up to speak for the public comment on the legislative agenda, so that's open and now closed. So now I need approval of the legislative agenda. Moved by Mr. Williams, second by Mr. Mootivaren. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, then I will call the next person for General City Business, Edmund Laven Jr. Not here. Okay. Fatima Isa.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The death and destruction in Gaza have continued unabated. The horrors are unprecedented. Gaza is hungry, and Gaza is thirsty. And it's you and I who are responsible. There is blood on our hands, a great deal of blood. There are those who say Gaza is not our problem, that Gaza is too far away, that nothing that we say or do is going to stop the terror and the pain that is currently being experienced over there. I would like to remind you here today that there was a time when the same was said about South Africa. I remember my own uncle saying, "There is no way white South Africans are going to give in to the African National Congress." Well, as we all know now, apartheid South Africa is no more. This Saturday, April 27, will be the 30th year of South Africa's first-ever democratic election. An election has resulted in the African National Congress coming into power, and Nelson Mandela becoming the president. Thirty years, I cannot even believe myself. I lived through it. Seems like just the other day, students at campuses all over South Africa were rallying, protesting, boycotting, organizing, and fighting to dismantle the apartheid regime. Today, right here in New York State, at the University of Columbia in New York City, American students are fighting for an end to the genocide and the brutality by demanding that their university divest from apartheid state of Israel. This morning, the university canceled in-person classes. More than 100 students have been arrested, and now students at other campuses across the country are settling-- are setting up encampments in support of the students of Columbia. Today at Yale, 47 students were arrested. There is no going back. The world has not only seen the sheer brutality of the IDF, but it has also seen how the apartheid state of Israel-- apartheid state of Israel manipulates the media and tells outright lies to gain the sympathy of the world. It took them only one theory, which was a false claim about rape on October 7th, to get immediate support from the world without any evidence. In fact, it was Israeli forces themselves who recently raped a pregnant Palestinian woman in front of her children, husband, and relatives at Ashifa Hospital. They threatened the family with death if they closed their eyes. Then they killed the woman and her unborn child. There is a great darkness that has overcome the world. The very least that we can do is say, "Please stop ceasefire now."
Good evening. My name is Mabel Leon. I sent a letter to city council a month ago, and I spoke at the last city council meeting two weeks ago to support a resolution calling for a ceasefire in Gaza. Now, what's happened in Gaza since I was here last? The bombs supplied by the United States continue to fall on Gaza with civilian deaths reaching more than 34,000. 77,000 people are wounded and 14,000 children have died. These are numbers, but each of these numbers represents a human being. The famine continues for babies and the most vulnerable, while the delivery of humanitarian aid continues to be limited and not sufficient to stem the tide of famine. The United States is not a bystander in this war, in this conflict. It is implicated in this continuing carnage. Our president asks the leaders of Israel to lessen civilian casualties, increase humanitarian aid, but our government continues to send bombs and offer no consequences to the Israeli government when they pay no heed. There must be decisive action. No more bombs to the Israeli government until humanitarian aid increases, there's a ceasefire, and there are efforts to lessen civilian casualties. The American people do not want to see babies and their mothers dying, and opposition to this madness grows with each day as seen by spreading protests and unrest on college campuses. My message to President Biden from his wife: Stop it now, Joe. Message to city council: Do your part and pass the resolution for a ceasefire now.
Madam Speaker, beloved councilors, it is an honor and pleasure to be here this evening. I am Imam Montaz Ali. I represent the Guyanese. The last count we had was 33,000. And I'm no stranger to the city council, because this city council believe in God. And once we put our trust in God, everything will go good. Say amen. I'm here this evening to represent the Guyanese, and I'm no stranger, as I told you, to this city council, to this city, because I have been presented with, from the mayor, or beloved mayor, a certificate, from honorable Paul Tomko, a certificate, and from the city council, because they recognize me as an Imam. It is said, "Those who have God have everything. Those who don't have God has, tell me, nothing." And I put my trust in this city council, this beloved, or we have one of the most honorable and beautiful mayor. He has a lot of respect for elders and so. So before I leave, I want to make a special prayer for all of us and for the city of Schenectady. In the name of God most gracious, most merciful, oh almighty God, I want you to have, people must respect one another. I want you that we must have peace and love in our families. I want we must have peace and love in Schenectady. We want peace and love around the world. Amen. Amen. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Karen Carmelli, and I'm not a resident of the city of Schenectady, I'm a resident of Albany, and so I didn't really think that it was appropriate for me to come. I've been following the ceasefire resolution proceedings very closely, but I was watching a previous meeting where there were lots of folks here who made a particular claim that an organization that I belong to called Jewish Voice for Peace did not represent Jews, and that in fact, its members were not Jewish, and our opinions did not factor into the broader Jewish conversation. So I felt a particular need to come here tonight to talk about that. Like I said, I'm a member of the organization called Jewish Voice for Peace, and what we advocate for is a world where all people from the U.S. to Palestine live in freedom, justice, equality, and dignity. Like generation of Jewish leftists before us, we fight for the liberation of all people. We believe that through organizing, we can and will dismantle the institutions and structures that sustain injustice and grow something new, joyful, beautiful, and life-sustaining in their place. I also want to acknowledge that tonight is the first night of Passover, and so I had Passover with my family last night so that I could be here today. Passover is a holiday where we talk about unoppressed people who yearned for freedom and achieved their own liberation. And we've also heard about the student protests that have been taking place all over the country. There is a valedictorian at the University of Southern California. She's a Muslim woman, and she has been barred from speaking, even though she is top of her class at USC. USC also has something called the USC Shoah Foundation, and that was an initiative to collect the testimonies from Holocaust survivors, Shoah survivors. One of those people that gave testimony was my grandfather. His name is Joseph, his given name was Joseph Inventage. He then changed his name to Carmelli when he immigrated to Palestine in the mid-'40s. I watched his testimony the other day, and if you're interested, I'm happy to share. It's a three-hour testimony, and it's very moving to me. But I watched it the other day, and I was so struck by the similarities of his experiences in the ghettos near Warsaw, and the comparisons to what people are experiencing in Gaza right now. And just to share one small story, when he was 10 years old in 1940, there was a German dignitary who was assassinated, and so the Nazis rounded up 200 intellectuals and business leaders and the people from his community, and they disappeared. Right before he was taken away, my grandfather's father, his name was Pesach, interestingly enough, which translates into Passover, he came to him and kissed him goodbye, and that was the last time my grandfather ever saw his father. In 1984, 40 years later, he learned that his father was shot in the Palmyra Forest outside of Warsaw and buried in a mass grave. And just yesterday, a mass grave, an additional mass grave, was discovered at the Nasser Hospital in Coniounis, in Gaza, and they pulled up hundreds of bodies from this mass grave. So I want you to understand that there are Jews like myself who are advocating for Palestinian rights, for a ceasefire, specifically because of our experiences of genocide. It is exactly because of my family's story that I stand with a ceasefire, and I think you should too. Will this make a difference? No. But would I have appreciated if the city of Schenectady said something about the Nazi Holocaust while my family was being exterminated? I would have. Please pass a ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Honorary Chief, City Council, Mrs. Porterfield, President, good evening, Mike Superior. There's just a couple of things I want to say. First of all, I've listened to the last two council meetings. I want to say that every person that has come up here, I respect for what they say. They're entitled to their opinion. They're individuals, how they feel is how they feel. I respect that. I do. My feeling, and what really touched me was October 7th. I stood by and I watched Hamas fighters parachute into a music festival, killing innocent Israelis, killing children. I watched ATVs barricade into that country, killing innocent people, killing innocent children. My heart breaks today. My heart also breaks what is happening in Gaza. There are so many innocent people and children out there that are, in the midst of this, that are getting killed and are getting hurt, and it's terrible. My God, when is this going to stop? Our world and our country right now, we are not in a good place. I pray to God every day we can find some kind of peace. I'm so sick of hearing the rhetoric on the news, it's just breaking me. It breaks so many of us that talk about it. I'm sorry I'm lost for my words right now, but I'm just, I just want peace. I want peace in this country, in this world. It's just a travesty that's going on right now. It's just awful. Innocent children, both sides, it's awful. I see Iran bombs Israel, Israel bombs Iran. When's it going to stop? Is it ever going to stop? Are we ever going to have peace in this world, in this country? We need to. Every day I pray to God, and I just, every day I say, "Please make this stop. Make it stop." I'm just sick of the lost lives. The children break my heart. The innocent people break my heart. I understand everybody's opinion, we're all entitled to it, but God, we need peace in this country, in this world. It's just got to stop. I hope it stops soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I wasn't actually quite sure if I was going to speak tonight, so I didn't write anything. You're getting me off the cuff. We are in a moment in history, and I hope that at this point, everyone's able to see it. For those of us that actually study history, the civil rights era, the fight against slavery, there are reoccurring themes. College campuses across the U.S. are standing up and boycotting and protesting. We saw that during the civil rights era. We saw that, the call to end apartheid in South Africa. We are facing many challenges in this country, and there is a convergence, just like we've seen in the past. We're fighting for women's rights again, just like we did then. We're fighting for an end to apartheid, just in someplace else, just like we did then. We're still fighting for housing and workers' rights and all of these things yet again. So my question to each and every one of you, which side are you on? Which side are you on? Which side are you on? Because the books will be written, the stories will be told, and where will your name fall on that ledger?
Thank you.
Madam President, I'm going to change topics a little bit, just for a second. I'll be brief. My name is Paul Milton. I'm the president and CEO at Ellis Medicine. I do want to do two things tonight. One, I went to the website and looked at the committee agenda for last week, and there was an item that said encouraging St. Peter's Health Partners and Ellis Medicine Administration to settle a fair contract with Neizna. I just want to make it clear for you that Ellis and St. Peter's are separate entities. They're not working together on this topic here. We have a management agreement approved by the state Department of Health, the state of New York. Ellis gets a chief medical officer and a chief operating officer from that. We have three things we're not allowed to talk about. One, we're not allowed to do joint programs together and message that to the public. Number two, we're not able to talk about rates with insurance companies, that's off limits. And number three, we're not allowed to talk about wages, that would be collusion. So those are three things that are very specific that we're not allowed to talk about in a management agreement. We are two separate entities. So I want that to be clear. Wasn't represented correctly in the media as well, but I wanted you to know that. The second is, and this goes back to COVID, I thank you, and our team thanks the council for all of your support. It's a privilege for us to take care of the people of Schenectady and try to meet their health needs. And it's the whole team. It's techs, it's therapists, it's food service workers, it's nurses and doctors, it's the board, it's the management team. So I really appreciate your interest to support Ellis as we take care of people in this community, in addition to the nurses. I do orientation with new employees every two weeks, and one of the first things I say is that the nurses are the backbone of Ellis, are the backbone of any hospital in this country. Every hospital in this country is struggling to find enough nurses. We're very proud of the Blandir School of Nursing. We have our largest class coming in this year, 91 students. We also, in the last 18 months, have had 50 nurses return to Ellis to work that had left. We're proud of the wages we pay, which are some of the highest in the region, and we're very proud of the benefit package that we have, which is also very competitive and highest in the region. So I just wanted to clarify that for the record as we go forward, and thank you for your support of Ellis as we take care of people in this community. Thank you.
Good evening. Chief Moreno, city council members. I said I would be back to talk about an issue of garbage along of Wiley Street and Strong Street. I've been meeting with the residents of Wiley, and they told me quite a few stories about the ongoing dumping that's been going on there, the different problems that they're having on their street. Interesting enough, I received a call yesterday that, "Ms. Porterfield, you've been interested in my whereabouts on Wiley Street and talking to..." in my whereabouts on Wiley Street and talking to people. Funny. I thought that was kind of interesting. You could have called me if you were wondering who I was meeting with and when, but you chose not to, and I understand that. But one of the things that, well, not one, there's a few things that would resolve this problem very quickly. Video surveillance, more lighting, and enforcement when people see people dumping on that street. Pretty simple stuff. There's been some talk, Mr. Williams contacted me, wanted to talk about this. We haven't finished those conversations yet, but one of the things that I disagree with, this is not a resident issue. We agree with Mayor McCarthy. Mayor McCarthy, very clear is that could be dangerous. This garbage has been dumped there for years and years and years. I would not send any resident down on that embankment or anywhere around there because we don't know what's down there. The residents tell me there's all kinds of huge rats running around. We don't know what's been dumped there, whether it's hazardous material, whether it's dangerous to people trying to pick it up. So it's not as simple as rolling in these roll tops and filling them up full of crap. You know, it's garbage, and it's dangerous, some damage garbage. So I would say that, as we advocated before, you have money in the leftover from ARPA. I know you have some pet projects you're trying to get across the board. However, I really believe that this could be money spent that would help all of the city of Schenectady, whether it's, you know, the look coming into our city in the winter. As we all know, it's going to be overgrown pretty soon, and people aren't going to see it, but that doesn't mean the garbage ain't there. And not only that, that the people on Wiley Street deserve a decent place to live, as well as Strong Street. And tomorrow, we're going to be releasing some more pictures of that area to the media. And I just think that if there is a ways and means of fixing this, we do it now. We have the funding. Let's get it done. And I'm calling on this city council to put aside their pet projects and put the people of Schenectady first. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Shakima?
Just like Jamaica, I don't have anything pre-written, but I would like to bring all the faith together, and this is something that we believe in. As Muslims, God says, and whoever saves a life, as if it saves the entire humanity. And this was stated by one of our previous speakers, who happens to be a Jew. And then I'm going to quote Dr. May, who happens to be the Executive Director for the Churches for Middle East Peace. She said, "It seems that we're not winning the battle of the hearts," as she calls it, "the prophet-hood message," meaning the clear message that we're all here trying to save lives. Some people, unfortunately, in the political arena, the heart is not there, the conscience is not there. I mentioned this before. I said, "This resolution will tell us who are the representatives and who are the politicians." And as we are here the third time, it seems like we are getting a better image. And I'm going to paraphrase what was mentioned earlier. It's very interesting that people came here and spoke at the podium and referred to saving what we have left of buildings. Yet, this is the third time we're coming here talking about saving what we have left of human lives. Our message is clear. We are here asking for the lives to be saved. And I'm going to mention this. It's an honor to work with everybody from all different walks of life, but one thing that has been a little bit hijacked, I would say, by some who are still saying, "This is not our call," and they're saying, "This is a one-sided thing." Let's pretend that there are no Palestinians in Gaza. You have Israeli hostages who are starving. You have Israeli hostages who are being bombed. Can you dare and stand and say, "This is not my business," to the Jews, to the Israelis, and dare I say even to the Zionists, who say, "We are here more interested in the hostages who are being held in Gaza?" Because if there is no ceasefire, these same hostages have been and will continue to be sharing the same fate as the Palestinians who are being killed in the thousands. And for anyone who is using the border as an excuse, that's the most cowardly call to say, "This is not a Schenectady issue. This is a very Schenectady issue," because we, as taxpayers, we are paying for the bombs that are being used to kill everyone in Gaza, Palestinians and Israelis who are being held hostages. Our tax money is being used to blockade and siege Gaza, where we have Palestinians and Israelis sharing the same fate. And this impacts each and every one of us in this same city, because when we preach, we tell people to care about everyone. And if you say that the border makes somebody different, I don't know where humanity will be. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa McKinnon?
Good evening and thank you. I am here tonight just to offer an appreciation for the Arbor Day resolution and the Arbor Day event that's coming up this Friday. I work as Farms Outreach Coordinator for the Sycamore Collaborative, so I'm part of Vale Urban Farm, and we're happy to have people come by Friday between 5:00 and 7:00 p.m. into Vale Farm, which is right off of Brandywine Avenue, you turn into Vale Cemetery. So we're excited. The city will be there, DEC Relief will be there, Re-Tree Schenectady, Ecos Schenectady Soil and Water, Schenectady Master Gardeners, and we'll be talking to people about how to take care of trees, what to think of when planting trees, answering people's questions. We'll have people doing tree identification. And I guess I was just thinking about too, in light of what folks have been sharing tonight, you know, trees are important for so many reasons, and our fruit and nut orchards, they're community orchards, so they're fairly newly planted, and we are an interfaith organization doing this work, and we've seen how powerfully it can be when we work together growing on these farms and raising fruit and nuts in the orchards, the opportunities for building, conversations, and for providing space for that too. So thank you, and we're looking forward to Friday.
Thank you. Robert Sanders?
Good evening, Madam President. Good evening, council members. My name's Robert Sanders. I just want to touch on a couple of things. Once a gentleman spoke, was very eloquent about what's happening over in the Middle East, and two weeks ago, you might have heard me speak, and one gentleman who just got up who was talking about the border, over a million U.S. people have died from drugs coming across that border, and he said, "That's not an issue. That's an American issue." Okay? And then I hear about genocide, how this is genocide. Okay? Now, I know if we go into Africa, into Sudan, and to other countries, we got half a million people dying right now. I don't see America pledging aid, going over there. I'm not for aid, for Russia, for Ukraine, for Israel, or for Palestine, anyone. That money needs to stay here in the United States. You know, we had 20,000 people die in one day in Normandy. Okay? And I know there's terrible things happening, and I understand that, but I do understand that this is the United States of America. People came here because they wanted to be free. They wanted to have their right to speak, you know, their own choice. If you want something in Palestine, if you want something in Israel, Ukraine, or Russia, go there, help them. That's how a lot of people feel about it. We have problems right here in this very country. And, you know, that's the root to everything, is I don't want to see anyone die. Nobody wants to see a war. I'm totally against war. I don't know why people just can't live in peace. And like one gentleman said, you know, "Just put this in God's hands." I mean, God has always helped us through things, and no matter who you are, what color you are, race, color, creed, or religion, you know, God will be the determining factor here. But it goes to the very back to everything here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Okay? And I don't have to say the whole thing, we already did that, but we know what's what. I do believe that everybody has a right to speak, but America is, and Schenectady needs to put itself first. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam Clay?
Hello, City Council. My name is Sam Clay. My lifelong resident of Schenectady, former employee of Schenectady. I was unjustly terminated back in 2003 after a coworker struck me with a truck in 2001. I've been putting in applications, getting no responses from anyone. I had, my last application I put in was on October 20, 2023. I had a brief interview with Chris Lund, who's the acting commissioner, I think he is. We had a brief interview, haven't heard anything back from him. I've called the mayor, I've come to the mayor's office and left messages for him to contact me, no response from him either. I've spoken to, I think it says, "Direct Secretary" Michelle Carr, and she told me, "The city's not hiring." And I said, "I put my application in last year. I was here two weeks ago. I didn't get a chance to speak because I was late." But I went over to the Finance Department. They still have a posting for the position that I applied to. So I would like someone to contact me and let me know what's going on, why I keep getting a runaround about getting employment with the city that unjustly terminated me. They also told me, Carl Olsen, to be exact, back in 2004, he told me I was returning back to my employment with the city, never gave me a start date back to work. So wouldn't I supposed to just sit and wait for somebody to call me? My life doesn't stop. No one's life stops. So I have to keep moving forward, but at the same time, I will keep applying because I could have retired after 20 years working for the city, but I would have continued because I was not of age to retire then. So all I'm asking is for someone to call me back, whether it's city council members, the mayor, someone in the department there, and we sit down and have a meeting, discuss everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Wicks?
Thank you and appreciate the ability to be here. October 7th could not have happened if Israel had guarded the wall that they built to enforce the apartheid. Better security would keep it from happening again, so this entire war in Gaza is a bloodbath that's not necessary. The war in Gaza is actually to steal all the territory from the Jordan River to the Mediterranean, which requires just killing the Palestinians or forcing them to live somewhere else where they have nowhere to go. Just additional comments here. Here's the fourth time I've been here at this meeting. No calling for the Schenectady to be on the right side of history to support a ceasefire in Gaza and Palestine. Meanwhile, I've written four letters to the Gazette, and things keep on getting worse. And note, I'm not Jewish, I'm not Israeli, I'm not Muslim, I'm not Palestinian. It's more a matter of, I know it's a matter of right or wrong. And I've been active in Schenectady for 62 years. I say antisemitism may happen here, but in my 62 years here, I've never observed it. I know I think fine people in Schenectady get along with each other. Okay, so the proposed resolution to stop our country from supplying the weapons and support to Israel for killing and starving, enforced relocation of innocent Palestinians and murdering the courageous members of the press and peacekeepers, should be simple. In fact, a Jewish Secretary Leader of the Senate has now noted that Israel has lost its way. And so I'd also say the most effective persons for resolving the situation are the members of the Jewish community, the Jewish Voices for Peace, not in our name, there's 16 anti-Zion Jewish organizations listed in Wikipedia, so they're the people that know best what the situation and what they're saying. And finally, the future ought to be to ultimately take down the wall, what happened in Germany and what happened in South Africa. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up to speak, so I declare the public comment of city business closed. This time, we'll have any miscellaneous business of the council. Mr. Williams?
Just for tonight's sake, I'm going to have to come up prepared for this. Thank you, everyone, who shared their thoughts, opinions, and concerns tonight. I'd like to take a moment to address the unobviant comments related to calls for a ceasefire within Gaza tomorrow with the body. This conversation is one that has deepened religious and emotional connections with many residents in our community, requiring attention in detail to identifying an appropriate and effective course of action. From the onset, divides have linked amongst pros or elite and pro-Schengi supporters, often categorized opponents as a test of design and respect. There is undeniable true pain being afforded to innocent lives through suffering that can't catch over us, and yet, that statement alone solicits varying responses based on your personal connection to your citizens. Let me be clear, I emphatically stand with the preservation of life, especially those events and children, and it's apparent that there is immense suffering on both sides. In the conversations that I've had with local advocates, I've recognized that our third-party accounts and our inability as leaders to move beyond established positions towards a point of civil discourse has not been a help. Whatever our response as a community, it must have been a backup. Dialogue and crafting a true resolution respective of our diverse community, or dialogue and calling for progressive conversations from our faith-based leaders that protect the sanctity of life for all Schenectadians. The unobviant conflict within the Middle East is one of immense complexity, and although my words cannot resolve this international tragedy, my position remains with those actively engaging to forge a path of continued peace with my community.
Thank you. Any other council members? Chief Moreno is sitting in for the mayor tonight. Chief?
I would like to just talk a little bit about an event that will be happening on May 18th of this year. It's called Sound the Alarm, and Sound the Alarm is sponsored by the Red Cross. The Schenectady Fire Department will be working with the Red Cross and with many volunteers on that day, going to a couple of designated neighborhoods in the city, to people that have signed up to have us go to their homes, do an assessment of their home to see if they have the proper number of smoke alarms, and then we will install free-of-charge smoke alarms to those homes, and then also sit with the residents to have a little education And then also sit with the residents to have a little education of fire safety. This year, we'll be going to the Hamilton Hill neighborhood and to the Vale neighborhood. It is a great event. I encourage anyone that is interested in participating, either as a volunteer or someone that would like their home to be evaluated, to check the Schenectady Fire Department's Facebook page within the next week will have more information, or go directly to the Red Cross page, and they'll have information on Sound the Alarm. Now, we are doing the two residents, the two neighborhoods, Hamilton Hill and Vale, but that doesn't mean that other families in the city are not eligible. They can contact the Red Cross directly, and they will make an appointment to come specifically to that home. So, smoke alarms save lives. Fire doubles every minute. So it is extremely important for anyone that has an issue in their home to be notified quickly. If you have an adequate number of smoke alarms, your chances of getting out of a home that's on fire increase tremendously. So please, go to the Red Cross, check out Schenectady's homepage, or Facebook page, and if you would like to volunteer, please do so. If you need a smoke alarm, please go there and sign up. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. First of all, I have a few community announcements. As was previously said, there's a Arbor Day celebration at the Vale Farms on Fair Avenue from 5:00 to 7:00, where our resolution will be presented. And also on Saturday, there's multiple cleanups across the city. There's four neighborhoods that have sent in information, so I'm just going to provide you with that. The Goose Hill neighborhood cleanup will start at Simons Park at 8:00 a.m. for you early risers. They'll be there from 8:00 to 2:00. The Hamilton Hill neighborhood will be doing a cleanup as well, that starts at 10:00 and ends at 2:00, and the meeting place is Jerry Burrell Park. The Boulevard Appreciation Neighborhood Association, VANA, will be cleaning up the Center Alley, East Alley, and West Alley. And that begin, they begin at 10:00 a.m., and their meeting place is the Calvary Orthodox Presbyterian Church on Rugby Road. And then finally, the Upper Union Street will also be doing a cleanup from 9:00 a.m. through 11:00 a.m., and they're going to be meeting at Brewer's Bagels on Union Street, and that will be rain or shine. So if anyone can come out to help with that, that would be great. And then I'd like to thank everyone for coming out to, tonight, to speak to whatever the topic was that you came to speak about. And we, some of us, in any case, have been talking and meeting with members of the community regarding the proposed resolution. And first of all, I want to make one thing clear. It was stated by people from both perspectives that we were open, or I'll speak, let me speak for myself, that I was open to only speaking to one group versus the other. Well, that in fact is not true, and so I am open and have been having those conversations with individuals who represent different viewpoints on this particular issue. It's what I said from the beginning, it's what I'll continue to say, that I'm always open for conversation. And what I will say also is, I'm, if you haven't already, are you speaking to your federal representatives, your congressmen, your two senators? I believe that all of us locally don't want any more bombing, we want the release of hostages. And we definitely want humanitarian aid. There was a speaker tonight that talked about President Nelson Mandela and what he was able to do. And part of the reason that he was able to do that was because he spoke to the people who would have been considered his enemies. So what I am asking and imploring you to do, you've asked us to sign a resolution for, for a ceasefire. And just so you know, I did read through the resolution entirely, and a lot of it calls for humanitarian aid. Every councilmember was sent that, was sent that resolution. It called for humanitarian aid and many things. There are some amendments to it that I would make, and, but at this point in time, we're not there where the resolution has actually been presented as to go on the agenda of the council. More locally, through these discussions, it seems to me there's a very large divide in our community. Something we have worked for over the years, that I've been a member of the council and even a member of the community, even before that, when my mother was working in the community, and that's went for, that goes a number of years back, where the community collectively were working for a common goal. And what is, what's going on right now, I'm seeing a more of a divide in our community locally, which is troubling because after it's all said and done, we're all going to still live here, and we're all going to have to start, still work together. So as you, as I often say, how you see it depends on where you sit. And from where I sit, I'm imploring individuals who have the different perspectives, I can't, I can't force you in the room together, but I implore you to really try to have those discussions that is creating this deep divide locally. I spoke to an individual here this afternoon who was working with Clergy Against Hate, and I know that all of you know that group, who said that they are trying to, and have spoken with the Imam as well as the Rabbi, in order to try to bring people together to discuss this. I know that you're looking for a resolution from the City Council. I know that there are, there is some consideration of if, if the resolution spoke to ending violence and giving humanitarian aid, which is something actually that President, excuse me, that Congressman Tonko was asking for in the press release that he recently sent out, sent out. I cannot commit to you that there will be a resolution that will specifically speak to ceasefire. I cannot commit that, commit to that from this council based on just the input. All of you, most, most of you have spoken to someone and have made your positions clear. So we, if you want to continue to come, and I know that Imam Jamal said they will continue to come, and we will definitely continue to listen, but again, if I, if, if there would be an opportunity, and I know the City Council can't convene this, and I think it needs to be convened among faith leaders to actually have this conversation so locally, we can work together to come to a common understanding. And I, and, you know, I'm not saying that, that it's going to be perfect, but I definitely think we have to try to work together right now because I feel like our community is becoming more and more divided as we try to come to a place where we can understand each other's pain, because there's a lot of pain right here. There's a lot of pain locally, there's a lot of pain overseas. But I can't ask you enough that we really have to come together and have these discussions to try to come to a consensus of what we are willing to provide in terms of support for the, for what is going on in Gaza and the Middle East. So I, I had some remarks that I had prepared, however, this is from what I'm hearing today, what is in my heart, that we really have to work together, people. I, I don't know what else to say about that. I, again, welcome any of the continued conversations and to see what we can do to work through this as a council, because I think maybe we should have discussions as well, and see, you know, where, where it, I don't want to say where it ends up, because that's probably not the best use, the best term, but what we can do collectively to support our local community and support the people who live here who are feeling the pain as we are of what's going on. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Move by Ms. Patrick, second by Mr. Williams. All those in favor? Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you.